This is the Weaver County Commission meeting, set on this the 12th day of February 2019. It's good to have you all here today. We note the absence of Commissioner Faur. We ended up having some last-minute duties at the Legislature, and one of us had to do it.
I love that you're scratching your head.
Yeah, we assigned it to him, but anyway. Representative Commissioner Faur went down to the Legislature to represent us, so we're going to excuse him today. And as a result, when we get to the thought of the day, Commissioner Harvey will cover that. So we welcome you today. We'll start this meeting with invocation by Rick Grover and a pledge of allegiance by Lynn Taylor.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity of to come before the, under these favorable circumstances. We're thankful for the freedoms which we possess, and we're thankful for the men and women who are out-serving or have served to preserve these freedoms. We're thankful for our Commissioners and for the efforts that they put in on our behalf. We pray that they may be blessed and their families may be blessed for their service. We pray a special blessing upon the families in West Ogden for their loss. Pray that they may be comforted at this time. We're thankful for the opportunity we have to meet again this day, and we pray as we do so that our Commissioners may be guided and directed in the affairs of our county to continue to help grow and promote this great county of ours. And we say these things, "Name of thy Son, Jesus Christ." Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Rick and Lynn, we appreciate your service there. Thank you. Commissioner, we'll go to you.
Thank you. You know, just some personal observations, if I could, Mr. Chair. This is, for me, my third year at being down at the Legislature, but this year is marked The request for empirical knowledge on specific topics usually comes now to the Commission from many different sources, from other cities, from other districts, from other agencies. And in many times, we're being asked to testify based on what we've learned or know or have experienced in our past. I know Commissioner Jenkins is almost reverenced. I want to use that, be careful. You don't have to laugh, this is my feeling, it's okay. He's kind of like the student body president come home, down there. But it's not just by the other guys that are on the floor. It's especially by the staff or those members who work there year-round. And that speaks a lot of things. Commissioner Faur is the same way. In fact, that's why he's there today. We have an opportunity. The state in years past has set aside some monies for maintenance of Olympic venues. One of the great Olympic venues that we enjoy in our county, in our area, is the curling venue, where the world stage was set upon people who slid stones or curled stones back and forth on a pebbled sheet of ice at the ice sheet. But what's different about our ice sheet than most of the other venues? And think about that. Many of us remember back, 17 years ago when the Olympics were here, but what's unique about our ice sheet? Well, I'll tell you. What other Olympic venue can you think of that has actually grown since then? Now, they've added a couple of more lifts in Snow Basin, but what about some of the other places? Can you say that about cross-country skiing, or can you say that about speed skating? Just to name a couple. Actually, our cross-country skiing was, the Olympic cross-country skiing, remembering the preparation for the Olympics was actually going to be held up at our North Fork Park. But because there weren't any Olympic venues down in Utah County, it was scheduled for Soldier Hollow. But the preferred site was our own Weaver County North Fork Park because of the terrain. We knew that Herman Meyer, then the number, one of the number-one downhill skiers in the world, said that Snow Basin was one of the top three downhill runs in the world. The Hermanator, you remember him. He told that to me personally out at the Golden Spike Arena. Now, I'm not much of a curler, but let me go back to our own Olympic ice sheet. Currently, our ice sheet has more than 365,000 visitors a year. 365,000 people go to the ice sheet. Because of the popularity of the ice sheet since 2002, in collaboration and conjunction with Weaver State University, a partnership, we grew the size of that Olympic venue another 73,000 square feet, adding a second sheet of ice and a beautiful practice field above it for Weaver State University. Currently, in its use, we have, last year we held 558 hockey games. We do more than 600-plus other type events a year there. We have between 300, 300 and 400 people and a learned-to-ski program there annually. We do open skating, figure skating, and other events held at that facility. It really is a wonderful thing. We hope to, and it's public knowledge, right at this very moment, at this same time, in front of a meeting at IGG, a hearing done at IGG, with some of the legacy funds held by the state, would like to grow our ice sheet once again and add another 12,000 square feet. A place where we could have even additional seating, or what they call dryland, a dryland experience, giving a place to warm up or do other things. Improvement of restrooms and things like that. We're really, really lucky to have fantastic managers that take care of the stuff and keep improving it, so that when the Olympics, should they come again, we're prepared. But in the meantime, for the other 1,500 days in between now and then, we'll be using it at the same capacity, or if not more so, than we are today. Let me, let me give you a quote as I finish this, Mr. Chair. We don't, and this is a quote by Fred Rogers, "We don't always succeed in what we try. Certainly, not by the world's standards, but it's not the honors and the prizes and the fancy outsides of life which ultimately nourish our souls. It's the knowing that we can, it's the knowing that we can be trusted, that we can have, that we can never have to fear the truth." So it's the knowing that we can be trusted and never having to fear the truth. That's the bedrock of our very being. It's good stuff. I want you to know that especially as I sit here with one in my life who now I consider a mentor in our chair, Scott Jenkins, that I trust him. We're in a good spot right now. I like the way that he treats and respects our people here in the county, not just to their face, but behind the scene when the door is closed. And it's a privilege for me to learn and sit by him in so many frequent opportunities. So according to Fred Rogers, Chair Jenkins, you're good stuff, and that's my thought.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that, Commissioner. You're great. I enjoy working with you too, and I want you to know it. It's, it is a privilege to be here. This is wonderful. I really enjoy it. All right, next item on our agenda is public comments. Is there anybody who would like to comment today before we get going? Mike is yours, if you'd like to. We'd love to hear from you. All right, don't see any. We'll go to the next item, consent items. Number one is approval of the warrants, 1691 through 1698, and 436374 through 436593, in the amount of $2,493,917. Next item is request for approval of purchase orders, in the amount of $166,991. Request for minute, approval of the minutes from February 5th. Request for approval of business licenses. Request for, from the purchasing department, for approval of surplus office equipment. Request for the Weaver County Fleet Department for approval of surplus road equipment vehicles. And a request for approval for a retirement agreement between Weaver County and Clint Anderson. Commissioner, got any questions?
No, I see that a lot of the, especially the big items, are reimbursements to the sewer fees and some of the COG things, but I don't have any questions as it pertains to the things that I've seen.
Would you like to go over those bills?
About. We issued 22 purchase orders for $167,000. 58% of that amount, or $97,000, is for the sheriff, and that will go to, towards purchasing in-car video cameras. 15% or $25,000 is for the CND landfill trailer repairs and some fuel. 10% or $16,000 is for roads, and that's road supplies. And then 8% or $14,000 is for the Golden Spike, and that is for garbage services and HVAC. As far as checks go, we wrote 228 checks this week for $2.5 million. One-third of that amount, or $811,000, is for employee health insurance. 18% or $458,000 is the WACOG or 1% transportation tax. It's a reimbursement to Ogden City for their 17th Street project, as well as some money for the 12th Street utility reconstruction and relocation. 11% or $263,000 was right-away acquisition, again, for the 17th Street projects, or reimbursement to Ogden City from the 1% transportation tax. And then 6% or $154,000 is for the jail, and that is primarily shower repairs, but also building maintenance and some culinary. And then lastly, 5% or $125,000 is for the library. That was a final payment on, for the main building, and that is for their lightning protection construction.
Yes, it's exciting to see final payments coming along here on some of these projects now. So that's good. Question?
Commissioner, you have any questions?
No. No, thank you, Ricky.
Surplus equipment on that. I want to call our attention to the fact, under fleet, these surplus vehicles, there's some snow cats on there. We've given some older ones that we've had, and we've given them the okay to surplus those in the preparation to buying one newer one, and this almost covers it. Was really my only...
Yeah, and the reason we're getting rid of the older ones is there are more maintenance in there. We don't really use that type. The snow cats, for those who know them, they're built in different configurations, and we no longer use that setup, and so we're changing with the need.
All right, Commissioner, I'm ready for a motion.
Commissioner, I'll make the, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent items. Our items F, 1 through 7, is listed on our agenda today.
Very good, and I will second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is approved. All right, item G, our action items. Request for approval of a resolution of the County of Weaver County, of the Commissioners of Weaver County appointing members to the Weaver County Fair Board. Ashton Wilson, our new Fair Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good. A little nervous.
This is your inaugural experience here at the mic, isn't it?
Unfortunately. Okay, so I am here to present this resolution to appoint three Fair Board members. They're filling vacancies on the board currently, and will be serving four-year terms. We've taken all the proper steps. The attorneys reviewed their applications, and we're just hoping to get approval from the Commission.
Terrific. So Sharlin Holmes, Linda Gaz, and Courtney Wayman?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Commissioner, any questions in favor of that?
I'm supportive of this Fair Board filling those vacancies that are there. The Fair Board seems to be fairly, fairly much still intact after the transition with several staff. We appreciate you, Ms. Wilson, who qualified herself on her own merit to be our new manager of events out there, as we've kind of, as Marty and Jennifer, the Department Director, decided to restructure that department to make things more efficient, so that it has more of a year-round presence, and congratulations on earning that.
Thank you.
That position.
Thank you.
So with their recommendation that we appoint those three, it's, I'll make the motion that we accept by resolution.
Eight.
Resolution number eight. The names Sharlin Holmes, Linda Gaz, and Courtney Wayman, for your positions to serve on our Fair Board.
And I will second that.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
And Chair Jenkins?
Aye.
Resolution eight passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashton. Next item is a request for approval of amendments to the travel policy. Lynn Taylor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Welcome.
So we're here today to approve amendments to the travel policy. This has been over a year in revision, and included input from all the different offices and departments in the county, especially the Sheriff and Health Departments. They had some very particular requirements, and I'm glad we're able to craft a policy that applies to all of the different sections of the county. Also, especially to HR and the attorney, who went through the whole thing with a fine-toothed comb to make sure that everything is in compliance with state and federal regulations. The biggest thing that this, the overarching philosophy we had on this travel policy is to put the control and responsibilities in the hands of the people who have the travel budgets. And everyone is excited to do that, and we look forward to implementing that. Unless you have any questions, I know we've talked about it individually, and you've had a chance to go through this. Have you had any last questions?
My only question is, did you and HR come to terms?
I believe so.
On per diem?
I'm going to go with yes. Oh, deal with advances. So advances are still possible if there's a need, but they won't be the routine matter, of course, that they had been in the past.
They are possible if there's a need.
If there's a need.
And who approves those?
They are approved by the travel approving official in conjunction with the comptroller that, that office accounts.
So the travel approving official is generally the Department heads?
Correct.
Okay.
Department head or elected official.
Okay, that's great. I'm pleased with that, then. Commissioner, you got any questions?
I love this. This was a 20-plus-year-old policy that they spent a great amount of time in the last, really about 18 months, really delving into the details of this. It gives flexibility, but to, now more flexibility to those who are traveling, yet more responsibility and accountability to the, to the Department Directors or the elected officials by which the people are traveling. Instead of putting it all, all that pressure on the purchasing agent, this is a lot better idea, because the purchasing agent doesn't control all the elected official or Department head's budget. This is a lot more responsible for Weaver County to do it this way. This is a great move in the right direction, and I fully support it. And with that, if you'll entertain a motion?
I will.
Great, then I'll move that we accept this policy as crafted, policy number 9.1.
Very good. I will accept that motion and second it.
Good. Wonderful.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Lynn, we appreciate you and your efforts. Very good. Next is approval of a contract between Weaver County and GeoStrata for geotechnology engineering and services for 782 Franklin Street. Brayden Felix. Look at how thick that dude's hair is.
Wow. It's all real, too. Just kidding, but really. So due to...
Excuse me just a second.
You're fine.
This is a little, it's, it's not just a little, it's a lot inappropriate, but Mr. Wilkinson, does grass grow on a busy street? I just was curious.
Go ahead, Mr. Felix.
Can't do nothing about good genes, you know?
No, that's fair.
That's right.
Or bad genes. Or bad genes.
That's right. Due to a concern from a resident in Ogden City neighboring the property 782 Franklin Street, he has some concerns that a property that we own due to a tax sale is causing some damage to his property. So to be preemptive, we have hired GeoStrata to go evaluate the property and make sure if we are actually holding any liabilities geologically.
Can you show us that property?
On a map?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, if someone wants to pull it up. I don't, I don't have a map on me right now. It's for...
But when you say geologically, if we have a responsibility, would you?
Yeah, I'll delve a little bit more into that. So there was a property that was on, or I should say, there was a house that was on this property a number of years ago. I don't know the history of the house. I think that it may have burned down. And my understanding of the property is that when it was done, when it had burned, they had pretty much thrown it all into the foundation, just covered it up with dirt. And so the, the claim from the resident next door is that because the foundation on the burnt house is failing, that the soil is pulling into the middle of the property, and that it's pulling the soil away from his house, thus his foundation is failing. In my instant opinion, that's not, soil, soil does not pull. It does not work that way. But so that we could be, make sure that we had ourselves covered, we hired a geologist to make sure of the liabilities we hold there.
So did we end up owning this property through a tax?
That was my understanding of what happened to it.
Yeah. So this is surplus property for us?
Yeah.
Well, that being the case, my...
Question?
My only thing is, is we're spending taxpayer dollars to...
Taxes and material not to exceed $2,000 to make sure this is fine. Are we setting a precedence by doing this? Are we required, are we required by any law or statute to make sure? I mean, I'm not familiar with, I'm not familiar with the topography at that location, but I know pretty much kind of, sort of where that is, and there is some slope there, but I'd like a little direction from, you know, I don't want to set up that every time we take into a property on tax sale, that we have to hire a geotechnical service to be able to get ourselves out of any potential... Thoughts, ideas, questions?
The reason that, this is under the direction of the Attorney's Office, that we should be getting this report, because the resident has threatened a lawsuit.
Okay. So this is a building lot. The building was on it, so it's a buildable lot.
I'm not familiar with the tax law and what would be required in order for it to happen.
Why did, why is that? Can I get some more, sorry, but can I get some more information from you, Mr. Wilkinson, or you, Mr. Crockett, on why we, the attorneys weighed in the way they did, or weighed in the way they did?
I would have to defer to Mr. Wilkinson. I was not the attorney who reviewed this, but if there are remaining questions, I'd be happy to talk with Courtland Erickson, who was the attorney.
Commissioners, we received a request from someone to purchase this property back in 2018. So we sent out notice to the adjacent property owners and said, "If you're interested, please contact our office." So I received a call from Mr. Ramirez, who lives next door, and he said that he had been in contact with our County Engineers Office, and he'd had people on-site who were telling him that the property that the county had obtained through the tax sale was damaging his property, that he was having cracks in his foundation and other things happening somehow because of our property. With a claim like that, we figured that it was the best thing to just go in and have someone study the property from a geotechnical perspective to confirm that the property that is now in the county's hands was not causing any damage. And that is what the study was for. That is the case. And Mr. Ramirez had talked about attorneys and getting a lawsuit and making the county pay for damage to his property and all those kinds of things. So we wanted to make sure that we were on solid ground with what we were saying back to him.
But we've only owned the property for, I don't know how long we've owned it, but we took the, we probably got the property because it was, nothing had happened for more than five years.
Correct. It was struck off to the county in a tax sale.
There are oftentimes claims made by other people who could be great people that are not always substantiated, correct? Or there's not any basis behind a claim. I'm, I pulled up the address on Google Earth and see where that is. Just give me a second here.
To the point, though, to Sean's point, when somebody's openly, this is not subtly, they're openly threatening a lawsuit against you, this is kind of cover yourself, isn't it? And if we're going to turn around and sell the property as a building lot, can we attach these fees onto the price of a lot once it's sold? The answer is I'm getting a head nod.
We can do that. You can charge whatever you want for property that the county owns.
I'd be okay with that. I just want to benefit the taxpayers' investment in that, in the piece of property we own while it's in our care.
So, Commissioners, the other thing, basically, this was a cost-benefit analysis. When someone threatens a lawsuit, if a lawsuit is actually filed, it will cost us money to respond to that. For the amount of the study versus the cost of a lawsuit, it made sense to just do the study, make sure we were on solid ground, and, and avoid that.
I'm to the point where, and that was my next, kind of my next question, but I'm to the point where I feel good about going ahead. I will make a motion if you're ready to...
I'm ready.
I'd like to make a motion that we, we accept the contract buying between Weaver County and GeoStrata for geotechnical engineering at 782 Franklin, and then make sure that the fees up until $2,000 are then, once that's completed, are added to the taxes to that piece of property before it's sold, knowing that we recoup our taxes, we'll recoup our
piece of property before it's sold, knowing that we recoup our taxes, we'll recoup all of our taxes and fees, expenses against the property, and then anything above and beyond that would then go back to the person who held the property in the first place.
Correct. This would qualify under administrative fees that the county has used to maintain the property.
That's great.
So we can recoup it.
That's great.
And I will second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brayden. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Brayden.
Okay, we have a public hearing scheduled for today, so with that, I'd accept a motion to adjourn this meeting and go into a public hearing.
So move?
All right, and I will second that. We are now in a public hearing.
Do we need to vote on that?
Oops.
Okay, great, thank you.
We did vote, we both said aye. All right, Felix?
Yes.
Please, you're gonna make a presentation due today.
Okay, Felix, lay it on. Yeah, that's right. Thanks, guys. It's an opportunity, it's a great opportunity to kind of show and present some of the work I've been working on, some of what I've been working on with a, kind of a overall effort to improve the aesthetic and also the, the accuracy of the zoning map that we, that we all use pretty much on a daily basis. And so what I'll do is I'll just put a map up here on the, on the projector and, and then kind of begin my quick, quick presentation here.
This little projector works pretty good, doesn't it?
It does, yeah.
I notice you guys use it all the time in your planning commission meetings.
Okay, so, yeah, so this is one that the surveyor office put together for us. And you can see, he's kind of split it out into different descriptions of areas that are going to be, that are going to be corrected. And so this application is a staff-driven request to amend the Weber County zoning map by realigning the O-1 and RE-15 boundary along the western edge of Highlands, Wolf Creek, phases one and five. This is intended to clean up discrepancies between the official zoning map and the subdivision's outer boundary. So on, on January 22nd of, of this year, 2019, the Ogden Valley Planning Commission heard this, this presentation, and forwarded it with a positive recommendation to the county commission. Staff is also recommending a positive recommendation for this zoning boundary realignment based on his compliance with the general plan. And if, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
My only question in this whole thing is, I look at this, and it doesn't affect where any of the houses are. All the houses are to the front of the property. And so I understand why we're doing it. I just don't understand how this happened, because if you rezone property for residential and the lots are numbered and in that zone, then how does parts, part of that zone get left out? Because it was obviously intended to be in there. It looks like we just made a mistake, is...
Yeah, it was just a mistake from two separate documents, because you've got a document that creates the zoning boundary, and then you have a document that creates the subdivision boundary.
Right.
And ideally, those should kind of come together.
Aye. Okay, well, it's just that simple. Mistakes happen. I appreciate you cleaning it up. Commissioner, you got any questions?
I got, I don't have any questions for Mr. Yavarino, but just a statement, I'm glad you're there, Felix.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So we're in a public hearing. Are there any members of the audience who would care to comment today on this action? Now's the time. Bueller? Yeah, Bueller. Well, very good, then. We, it looks like everything's done. Commissioner, would you like to make a motion to close the hearing and go back to a regular public meeting?
Make the motion, we adjourn our public hearing and reconvene a public meeting.
Okay, and I will second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now back in our regular meeting. Well, with that in mind, do you want to take a motion on it?
I'll make a motion that we, I'll make a motion that we amend the Weber County zone map by realigning the O-1 and RE-15 boundary along the western edge of the Highlands at Wolf Creek, phases one and five, to approve the rezoning ordinance.
And I will second that. All in favor, say aye.
It's an ordinance.
Oh, that's an ordinance. Very good, go ahead.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
And Chair Jenkins?
Aye.
Very good. That passes. Okay, Commissioner comments? You want to comment?
I have to say my piece.
Well, I don't have much to comment about either today, other than we appreciate the agencies of the county and your work you do, and that's what we do here, isn't it? We just keep steadily plugging along and making sure we keep this county in the shape it is, and even possibly a little better. All right, do you want to go home or go back to our office?
Yes, but no, we can't. And yes, the second would be great. So I'll make a motion, we adjourn this meeting.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.